December 2nd, 2025, meeting of the planning board. First, we'll take a roll call to introduce board members and staff. Uh, Mike Dridarian.
Present.
Phil Giordano.
I'm here.
Maureen Collins White.
Here.
And Tim Hallidina.
Here.
Welcome, Tim. Nice to see you. Um, and I'm Ellen Rawlings. I'm also here. We are also joined by Elijah Romulus, our town planner. Nora Lockne, our Director of Community and Economic Development, Jess Cole, our Recording Secretary, and Charlotte Lynch from Westwood Media Center. This meeting is recorded by Westwood Media Center and broadcast live on local cable television Comcast Channel 6 and Verizon Channel 42. Meetings are also live on the Westwood Media Center's YouTube channel. If you're interested in joining the meeting via Zoom, you can find the login directions in the Planning Board's meeting notice that is posted to the Calendar section of the town's webpage at We will begin the meeting with only the board members and staff unmuted and on video. As the Chair recognizes individuals to speak, we will unmute them. Board members may choose to mute themselves when they are not speaking in order to minimize background noise. For applications, the Chair will first invite the applicant to address the board and give a presentation summarizing what is being requested. Board members receive the application materials prior to the meeting and will have reviewed them. Board members may ask questions during and following the presentation. Staff and outside experts will provide comments to the board. If the issue includes a public hearing, the board will then proceed to the public comment portion of the public hearing and will restate the instructions. In this remote meeting format, residents and guests may participate in several ways. Attendees should raise their hand and wait to be unmuted and recognized to speak over the Zoom meeting application or from a telephone dial-up. We will be able to hear you but not see you. Additionally, comments may be submitted by email or regular mail prior to the meeting. When we come to that part of the meeting, I will remind everyone of the process. Following the public comment portion, the board will deliberate and make a decision or continue the hearing to a specific future date. All remote meetings require that votes be taken by roll call. When a motion and second has been made, the Chair will ask if there's any further discussion before proceeding to a roll call vote and will then restate the results of the vote. Okay. Um, Elijah and Nora, do we have any changes to our agenda this evening?
No changes to the agenda.
All right, then we will take our first item, which is 62 Everett Street. As this is a public hearing, I will read a snippet from the legal notice to open it. The Westwood Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing on December 2nd, 2025 at 7:00 PM via Zoom regarding an application filed by 62 Everett Street LLC for consideration of an environmental impact and design review pursuant to Section 7.2 of the Westwood Zoning Bylaw for the purposes of a change of use to a vehicle sales and service business owned by Central Motors and associated exterior and site modifications at 62 Everett Street, Westwood, MA 02090, in accordance with PB-25-46. The property is in the Highway Business HB zoning district and within the Flexible Multiple Use Overlay District 3, FMUD 3, the land affected Assessors Map 23, Lot 228, and the property owner is 62 Everett Street LLC. All right. Um, do we, ah, I assume Mr. Watzke, are you here representing the applicant?
I am, yes, thank you.
Very welcome.
So, if it may please the Chair, first, before we start, I believe that, um, my client Peter Katnese is attending as well. Is it possible to have him advanced as a panelist as well?
Absolutely.
Yes.
There we go. Now, Peter, you can unmute yourself and turn on your video, perhaps. Um, also, do I have sharing, uh, permission?
You should.
Okay. Um, so, th- thank you. Uh, this is a property you're probably all familiar with. It's the existing Progressive Building that's on Everett Street in between the Mercedes-Benz dealership and the, the new multi-use, uh, uh, building that, uh, the Giorgio is building. Um, I can share my screen and just sort of refresh your memory of it. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
There we go. Okay, so this is, this is a view with one's back to, uh, to Everett Street, looking at it obviously at an angle. The, the, the different features of the building are, are right here. So you have the existing canopy that's on the front right. The, the section of the building on the left side of what you see here is the section that was, uh, used by Progressive as an office building. Um, the glass wall is where they had their reception and, and customer, you know, uh, uh, client, client meeting area and reception. And then in the back on the right, there's a section of the building in the back. You can see, um, the, a garage access door, and there are two more garage access doors to the rear of the building. That whole section in the back of the building is where Progressive would have, um, damaged cars come in and put up on lifts and, um, some work would be done on them and they'd be inspected and evaluated for insurance claims. Um, what, what Central will be doing, obviously changing the, the sign on the, on the building, um, is change the use of the building from primarily an office along with the automotive in the back to a building where they would have, um, some vehicles and vehicle accessories on display in the area that previously was used as, um, as the, the office space and, uh, provide, uh, the full automotive services in, in the rear of the building, um, in the area that's already designed to, uh, to have auto service and, and inspections conducted. Um, I could take you through the site plan. So first, I'll, I'll go to the landscape plan. So this, this was the plan that was approved, uh, for the progressive, uh, development. Um, so showing the entire building in, again, it, I don't know if you can see my cursor. So the canopy that we were seeing very prominently is here on the front right. Um, the office part of the building was everything that's on the, the, the left side of the building and then you had the, the, the workspace that's the back right. Um, the, the landscaping plan is showing, uh, it was a swale and, uh, 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 what's it called? A, a garden, rain garden, um, in the back left of the parking lot and, and other landscape or drainage features. Um, you can also see this fairly prominently, a, a wetland that, um, you have a 100-foot buffer zone that's shown right about the, the edge of the parking lot. Um, it said, that, that wetland lies in between this property and the, uh, the new, the new multi-use project that's going on. Uh, uh, it's under construction. Um, we've checked and all of the plantings that are shown on this plan are there um, and have been, with one exception that in the, the, the right-hand side, the small, the small dots, those are, uh, type of grasses. Those had died off in the past. Those have all been replaced. So the existing condition is now consistent with the approved landscaping plan that was pre- prepared for, uh, progressive. There are no changes proposed to the extent of the impervious surface on the site, no changes to the building other than, uh, in the area right about here, there, there would be, uh, change to the doorway and to the part, to the spaces for, um, for handicap spaces. So here's, here's the way the, the existing conditions are shown with the one, two, three, four, five handicap spaces. That number of spaces was necessary because when Progressive was using it, they had like two-thirds of the building filled as office spaces with tiny little coves. And so with the number of, um, of, uh, cars and, and occupants that were calculated, they needed five handicap parking spaces with the change that, uh, that is being made to the use and the number of spaces that were proposing to be dedicated to people coming into the property. The calculation changes to only needing four parking spaces. And so a four handicap. And so this is the proposed, uh, change. Now, I can zoom in a little bit on this if you'd like. There we go. So the, the handicap spaces would be laid out like this and, and all that would happen is that in this location, I want to increase my, my cursor. You can probably see my cursor now. In this location right here, the doorway would simply be changed so that right now it has a fixed glass panel plus a door that, uh, people can walk in. Um, and that would be changed so that both sides are, are hinged so that vehicles can be driven into the display area of the building and, uh, accessory parts and the like could be driven in on a pallet. Um, that's really it. There's no change to lighting, to the water usage of the building, to any of the things that, that would be typically under review, uh, for any IDR. And so for, for all of those things we've, uh, requested waivers. Um, we have seen the peer review comments and we have no problems with, uh, a condition, uh, requiring that we do the things that are requests or suggested by the peer reviewer with the only caveat being that, um, it's not clear to me from the order of conditions that was issued by the Conservation Commission back when the project was first built that management of the vegetation within the swell or within the, um, um, here we go, within the, the, the rain garden. It's not clear to me that the order of conditions allows management of the vegetation within either the swell or within the rain garden. Management is allowed as a continuing condition in the order of conditions uh, for, for the vegetation on the slopes of the detention basin. So that's, that's clearly no problem at all. So all I would say is that we would make an inquiry to the Conservation Commission whether the work that the peer reviewer has suggested be done to, to manage, I think invasive species within the, the swell and the rain garden if that's permissible under the Conservation Commission's order of conditions. Otherwise, we're fine with it.
Thank you. I'm sorry if you weren't finished. I didn't mean to cut you.
I, 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 I'm done. I mean, I'm happy to take whatever questions, uh, the, the, the members may have at this point.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, that was concise yet thorough. Um, so thank you for that. Um, all right, I would open up the floor to staff comments or questions and then we'll proceed to board member comments or questions.
Um, yes, so the applicant, uh, kind of went over it. Uh, I would just point out that, uh, our consulting town engineer did make, uh, comments related to stormwater management and, uh, the affirmation, uh, aforementioned, uh, swell and, uh, you know, uh, basins. So we do have conditions of approval that incorporate, uh, those comments.
Right, and that's fine with every intention of maintaining all of the stormwater features on the site.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, any other staff comments or input at this time? Okay, then I'll open up the floor to board member questions or comments. Mike?
Hello, um, thank you for that presentation. And those presentations are very, very helpful for us. Um, and I agree it was concise but thorough. So thank you for that. Um, I just had one quick question. Um, the change in use of the building would, will, will there be more of like a noise component? Um, that could affect the, the neighboring apartment buildings? I'm not sure what time, you know, the, the business will stay open until or, you know, how many, how many cars would be worked on and what kind of noise that would bring? Um, it was, was there any thought to that? Is that, should that be something we should think about or look at? Um, could you comment on sort of like the noise this type of business would create?
Sure, it's a perfectly reasonable question. Thank you. Um, we don't believe that the, the, the change in the use will result in any measurable change to the, to the noise emitted by the, by the, the, the use of the property. You know, all of the, uh, the automotive, um, uh, repair and maintenance, uh, work will be taking place inside the building with the doors closed. Uh, and so the use of the exterior of the property on the, you know, the parking lot will not change from the way it's been forever, which is it's going to be used as a parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, Phil, yes?
Just a quick question. Any, um, from the automotive service process, any hazardous waste or, uh, disposal issues that we should be apprised of?
Um, another good question. We, we've provided the staff with a very detailed O and M plan that includes the references to, um, to current vendors that, that Central Motors uses for each of its other facilities like Safety Clean. So that, so that any of the fluids that are, that are um, taken out of the, the, the vehicles that are getting serviced are carefully stored, uh, manifested, uh, and, and, uh, and shipped off site for processing or reuse. And all of that is under, uh, the standard O and M plan to, um, be very carefully managed.
It's the, it's the same vendor you, you've had with your existing facility over on Providence Highway?
That's right.
Okay, so obviously you already have a pretty high degree of reliability and confidence in them.
That's right. That's right. We have a very detailed, uh, plan in place for, for any of, uh, Peter's facilities that, that for, for how to manage, document, track, um, all of those, uh, different fluids and regulated materials.
Okay, that's, that's good. I'm set. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Elijah, I see your hand up?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to, um, kind of, uh, add to that. Uh, so that was something that came up during the, um, review process and we did, um, provide them the, uh, previously approved O and M plan for Progressive and they were able to update it, uh, based on that in addition to what their current, uh, practices are.
Excellent, thank you. Sorry, I was stuck on mute there. Uh, Maureen?
I just had one quick question about the, um, the zone. And it's, there was a mention of, um, 4.1.5.8. And that said in that block BA, which means I think what? Board of Appeals? So I'm not sure. Is this something that needs to go to the Board of Appeals or is this something because it was a pre-existing?
It's already been to the Board of Appeals and you received a special permit.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Uh, Tim, yes?
I just had a quick question regarding signage. Uh, I think I saw the only anticipated signage change is just the existing where it says Progressive will change to Central. Or is there any other signage that I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything else? Um, that's the only substantive change.
Um, Peter, can you answer that? Do you have any, any signs planned other than just using where, where the words, the word progressive is on the building already?
Just the two existing signs will change. The one that's on the building and the entrance. That's it. There's no other signage.
So what, what is a freestanding sign in front of the building along Everett Street and one is on the, on the face of the building?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, any other board member questions, comments? Not seeing any. Um, just the one note I would make. I, I was just looking again. I didn't notice, uh, uh, in a landscaping plan with a plant species list. If I missed it, I apologize. But, um, just a note that our requirements have changed since the Progressive building went in. Uh, we do require Massachusetts native plantings now. So I think there, there will be a condition that any plants that don't survive. Obviously you have plantings that are probably not Massachusetts native because they were planted prior to that requirement, but we would just ask that any replacement plants would conform to that requirement.
Uh, I, I think that, that's fine. Uh, as long as, as long as the condition doesn't require that we tear up existing plants.
No, no, no. No, we don't do that. That's, that's, um, we don't like to kill vegetation that way. That's counterproductive. But we do tend to, we know we're, we've seen a few applications recently where it's, you know, a pre-existing, um, property that already has some existing landscaping. So we do just ask that, just to be mindful of that, that if, if there's plantings that are have failed and need to be replaced, um, and that, that can be administratively approved by the town planner, the species choices, I believe, right? Elijah?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. Uh, thank you. Uh, Tim, I saw your hand go back up.
Yeah, just one more question. I was reviewing the, the traffic assessment too and just, um, like an extra cognizance of that given some of the, the other projects ongoing in, in the area. Um, just out of curiosity, you said there's going to be service element here too. Is there, uh, in the traffic assessment, I didn't see anything specifically referencing, um, uh, things like test drives or other, uh, other types of services that an auto dealership might have? Is that all contemplated within the numbers shown, uh, in the study? I just, I want to make sure that adequately covered with respect to traffic.
Okay, yeah. So it's my understanding that when the traffic engineer provides a report like this, they're, they're, they're taking standardized, standardized, uh, uh, traffic, uh, numbers from similar facilities and just applying them to this. So, so whatever, whatever standard there is nationwide for traffic consultants to say, okay, it's going to be an auto dealership of X number of square feet of interior space, this is how much traffic we would expect it to, to generate.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, uh, any other board member or staff questions? If not, I will open it up. Maureen, yes?
Yeah, one quick question I forgot. Um, were you planning on doing anything with any of the asphalt or concrete? I thought I had maybe, um, read something about that.
There's, there's absolutely no change proposed to the impervious surface other than just repainting the lines for the handicap spaces.
Okay, thanks.
Excellent. Uh, all right, um, I'll open it up to public participation as this is a public hearing. If anyone from the public would like to comment or ask a question, please raise your hand or enter your comment or question into the Q and A portion of the Zoom app. We will need your full name and address to be able to recognize and share that question. I'll give it a minute. I'm not seeing anything in the Q and A, nor do I see any hands raised. So, uh, if there are no further board member or staff or any questions or comments, um, I would happily entertain a motion.
I can start this one now.
What do you, displace me, Mike? What do you do? Go ahead.
I read a little faster than you.
I'll be the bigger man here. Go ahead.
Oh, you took the quick one.
I move that the planning board grant waivers of the following sections of the zoning bylaw in association with environmental impact and design review, EIDR approval for the change of use to a motor vehicle sales and general repair facility and associated exterior alterations at 62 Everett Street as described in the application, therefore submitted to the planning board and filed in the office of the town clerk on October 17, 2025. One, waiver of strict adherence to requirements of Section 7.2.9 requirement for a landscape plan. Two, waiver of strict adherence to requirements of Section 7.2.10 requirement for an exterior lighting plan. Three, waiver of strict adherence to requirements of Section 7.2.4 requirement for a stormwater management report. And four, waiver of strict adherence to requirements of Section 7.2.5 requirement for a traffic impact study.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Maureen?
I.
Mike?
I.
Phil?
I.
Tim?
I.
I vote I as well. That motion carries. I think we have a couple more.
I move that the planning board grant environmental impact and design review approval for the change of use to a motor vehicle sales and general repair facility and associated exterior alterations at 62 Everett Street as described in the application, therefore submitted to the planning board and filed in the office of the town clerk on October 17, 2025, subject to the following conditions. One, except as modified by the conditions and finding thereof, the project shall comply with the project plans and with the conditions of all prior decisions of the property in all respects, and the applicant shall pursue completion of the project with reasonable diligence and continuity. Two, if the project or any condition imposed in this decision requires any other permit license or other approval from any town of Westwood Board Commission or agency or other Commonwealth or federal regulatory agency, the applicant shall make an appropriate application for the same and shall obtain all required approvals prior to the start of any work. If any condition of such permit license or other approval from any other board, committee, or agency is inconsistent with this decision, the applicant shall make application to the planning board for an amendment of this decision, and the planning board shall consider such application in accordance with the requirements of MGL Chapter 48, Section 9, and all applicable planning board rules and regulations. Three, any proposed alterations, modifications, deletions, or changes to the decision shall be requested in writing to the town planner and building commissioner prior to implementation. Proposed alterations which are considered de minimis by the building commissioner may be accepted as a note to the file. Proposed alterations which are considered minor by the building commissioner shall require the filing of a modification application of said approval for review by the planning board at a publicly posted planning board meeting. Proposed alterations which are determined to be major by the building commissioner or by the planning board shall be considered by the planning board as a formal amendment to the approval and will require a new public hearing before the planning board. Four, the decision shall lapse if a substantial use thereof or construction thereunder has not begun except for good cause within two years following the grant thereof. The planning board may extend such approval for good cause upon the written request of the applicant prior to the issuance of a building permit. Five, the applicant shall submit an updated site plan for review and approval by the town planner, which plan shall be consistent with the intentions of the majority of the planning board members as expressed in the course of the public hearing session on November 18, 2025, and consistent with all recommendations in the peer review report for 62 Everett Street Environmental Impact and Design Review prepared by Stephen Lee P.E. and Philip Paredes, P-E-L-E-D-A-P. Okay, that's his stuff. Dated December 1, 2025. During construction. Six, all project-related construction activities shall comply with the timeframe set forth in the town's general bylaws, Chapter 292, for noise and construction, which allow such work Monday through Saturday between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM and Sunday between the hours of 12:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Seven, the applicant shall protect all components of the existing stormwater infrastructure, including cleaning all catch basins, water quality structures, and drain manholes to prevent debris from entering the stormwater system during construction. Eight, the applicant shall restore and maintain the existing swale along the westrily property line in the rain garden in the northwest corner of the property, including the replacement of plantings as needed to comply with the approved landscape plan for the property contained on Sheet 10 of the plan set titled Progressive Insurance Regional Claims Office Site Permitting Plan 62 Everett Street, Westwood, Massachusetts 020090, prepared by Conoco engineers, scientists, and surveyors for First Street, Bridgewater, Mass. 02324, dated January 19, 2012, and revised through June 5, 2012, which was approved by the planning board pursuant to the EIDR approval for the prior progressive insurance development of 62 Everett Street. Nine, a copy of this decision and the project plans shall be kept on the project site at all times during construction. Prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy of use. Ten, the applicant shall obtain an inspection report of the infiltration base, infiltration basins from the consulting town engineer or designee verifying that all stormwater infrastructure, including all catch basins, water quality structures, and drain manholes have been cleaned and that all components of the stormwater management system are working properly. If any concerns are identified and set inspection report, those concerns should be addressed to the satisfaction of the Director of Public Works prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy of use. Eleven, if any alterations are made to the project infrastructure, the applicant shall provide one original and three certified copies of an as-built site development plan. Certification shall be by a registered professional engineer and/or land surveyor as required and shall indicate that all driveways, parking areas, sidewalks, storm drains, sewer mains, water mains, and their uh, pertinences have been constructed in accordance with said project plans and are accurately located as shown thereon. The rain garden shall be certified to have been built in accordance with the approved plans, including volume, area, and location. The as-built plan shall be delivered to the board in a format approved by the Information Systems Director for compatibility with the Town of Westwood G.I.S. database. During operation, the applicant should take all measures necessary to ensure that all garage doors remain closed at all times with momentary exceptions as necessary to move vehicles into and out of the garage bays. Thirteen, all non-security lighting throughout the entire site shall be turned on no earlier than one half hour before opening and turned off within one half hour of closing. Fourteen, all components of the stormwater management system components shall be maintained in perpetuity. An annual inspection report shall be submitted to the town no later than December 15 in each calendar year. Fifteen, all landscaping approved herein for maintenance and or replacement shall be Massachusetts native species and installed at the earliest possible date, but only during the spring growing season running from April 15 through June 15 or during the fall growing season running from September 15 through November 15. Any plantings that do not survive shall be replaced in kind in perpetuity at the property owner's expense. All replacement trees shall be a minimum of four, uh, feet cap, four-inch caliper, and the town planner shall confirm that the replacement plants satisfy the native species requirement prior to planting.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Yes, Nora?
If, if I may, before, before you, you vote on this?
Yes.
Um, I hadn't seen this before, but there, there are some things here that I think require some clarification.
Sure, we can certainly have that discussion. Um, I do see Nora, your your hand is up.
Yes, so I was going, we can go back to discuss whatever particular conditions one by one, but I was going to also recommend that you add a sixteenth condition to reflect language that the zoning board of appeals put in its special permit. Um, and I can read that to you. It's just for clarification. It doesn't impose any changes. It just makes sure that the record reflects that the applicant is aware of the town's uh possible intentions to acquire some land. So the condition in the special permit the ZBA issued says the applicant acknowledges that the town of Westwood may at some future date pursue plans to acquire a portion of the property by eminent domain for the purpose of providing improved roadway and or utility access to other parcels within the F M U O D three Glacier Everett Business District. This was also a condition that was placed on the um the special permit that the ZBA had issued for the progressive insurance building.
Thank you. So that's essentially a carryover from the previous.
It is, yes.
Thank you. Uh, okay, yes, Mr. Watzke, if there were particular conditions, we can we can certainly discuss them before we uh move to vote.
Okay, so if we can scroll closer up to the top, please, I think the first one I had concern about was number seven. Um, no, that's not it. There's there's one specifically about construction.
The hours? Number.
That sex?
No.
Are you looking at six?
Uh, no, I mean, scroll scroll back up, please. I'm sorry.
Number four?
Show apps. Yeah, well, so. So number four, number four is a is assuming that there's construction. There really is no construction proposed here. It's just going to be a converted conversion to the different use.
So construction is a broad term, and that includes the um relocation of the parking spaces as well as the replacement of a door.
Okay. All right, so scroll down, number five. Um, I I I it's not clear to me what edits or revisions to the site plan are needed given the 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 conditions that have been set out here. So could you please clarify the intent here? We shall submit an updated site plan for review and approval by the town planner, consistent with the intentions. It's it's approved consistent with the.
If I can, if I can. Yes, so that that's a standard condition that Elijah usually puts in applications anticipating that the board is going to have concerns that are raised at the hearing. I did not hear any concerns that were raised, and I believe all of the conditions of the um the the peer review have been incorporated into other conditions. So I'm not sure that condition is needed.
Thank you. Yeah, I are our board members comfortable with just removing it? I don't see any reason to maintain it, but if there's concerns, I'm think we should hear it. Any board members object?
I would actually prefer the removal of it because otherwise it gives the appearance as if there is to be one, and I'd rather have it deleted.
Thank you.
Okay, and then here's a during construction paragraph six that the applicant shall protect all the components of the existing stormwater infrastructure that it's there to prevent debris from entering the stormwater system during construction. That that typically would require that you put like silt socks around all of the 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 catch basins and the like, but with the only work that's being done is replacing the front door. Question, is is this condition really necessary or appropriate?
And signage.
So so I do think that this condition is necessary. How you protect those structures is up to you. If you don't feel that there's any need for silt sacks or for any physical construction, but you just um instruct your contractors who are replacing that door or who are um doing painting for the new striping of the handicap spaces, if you just instruct them to make sure no debris goes in the catch basins, I think that would be in conformance with this condition.
Okay, if if that's if that's sufficient to comply, that sounds fine. All right, then number seven, to restore and maintain the existing swale along the property, Westerly property property line and the rain garden. As I expressed in the in the hearing part of it, my concern about that is that these are features that were um um regulated by the Conservation Commission in their order of conditions. I could share the order of conditions with you, but so it the order of conditions is explicit that there are continuing requirements to to maintain the stormwater features throughout the property, but it's it says specifically that the 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 slopes of the detention basin are to be mowed on a regular basis, which, for what it's worth, progressive, I don't think ever did, but but Peter will have it done. But it doesn't have an explicit provision allowing removal of any old vegetation in the rain garden, for example, at all, or in the swale. And I'm concerned about having conflicting conditions, a condition in this permit that says you gotta go change the vegetation in the rain garden and the Conservation Commission potentially saying rain gardens are supposed to be planted, vegetated, and then left to just grow naturally. Don't touch it. So I don't want to have a conflict.
So we will make sure that the Conservation Commission, the Conservation Agent issues a clarification to let you know that they do allow maintenance of rain gardens, especially to remove invasives or to correct them when they're not properly functioning. But we can make sure that you get a statement from the Conservation Commission assuring you that there are no conflicts.
Okay, thank you, Nora. And I was planning on on reaching out to the CONCOM agent to 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 seek that clarification. So that's good. Thank you. Um, I think that really solves the concerns I have. Peter, do you have something else?
Yes, I need clarifications on who's going to control the eminent domain on the land and exactly what that means. Was that there for progressive before?
Yes, it was. It and it's also in your ZBA special permit that you received in October.
Right, so who has the right to do that? The town, the state?
Town meeting uh would would have to vote to take any land by eminent domain. This is just letting you know that it's been discussed for many, many years um as a potential site to gain access to most of the Glacier Drive area, which has very limited access right now to Everett Street and to uh Route one. So it's not something that we have immediate plans to do, but it could happen at some time in the future, and we wouldn't want you to be surprised by it, which is why it was put in the progressive decision, and it was put in your special permit as well for that you got from the ZBA.
But so may maybe some a little bit of clarification here, Nora. My understanding is that the the reference to the potential taking um in the permits for progressive, we're referring to the potential of having a strip of land taken on the back property line. Um, that's uh NF Glacier Limited Partnership uh along that brought back property line. Is there something other than that, or is it just just along that back property line? Because we were aware of it.
The strip wasn't along the back property line. It was to gain access to the rear property line of your site where it meets up with the glaciers glacier drive site. So there there were two possibilities that were considered. One would be on the east lot line, and one would be on the west lot line, both in areas where there is no current construction, but there are um there could be effects to the property. If an easement was taken on the east side of the property line that went through the uh current curb cut, it would not necessarily disturb any of the property, but it would allow traffic to move through the site. If it was done on the west side of the property, I believe it would be outside of your parking area. Again, it's not something that has been flushed out. It's something that was discussed many years ago, and we would just like to make sure you're aware that it could happen in the future. Now, this is kind of a belt and suspenders. Any property can be taken by eminent domain at any time for a public purpose if voted by a majority at town meetings. So um this is not something that we're looking to do right now. I just want to make sure that we maintain the same language in this decision and the zoning board of appeals decision.
Okay, I I understand. And and Peter, just, I mean, we can talk about it, but having you acknowledge that that's something the town has expressed a possibility about doesn't waive your right to contest whatever value is put on that taking if the taking were to ever happen. So.
Right.
The town, the town always has the authority to do to take land by eminent domain, then it and then it just becomes a question of 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 how much is it worth?
Right, and nor does it nor does it interfere with your right. If this ever does come before town meeting, you would have the right to testify to your beliefs of how it would affect your property at town meeting and try to defeat a proposal if it ever comes to that. Uh, this is just making sure that you understand before you take um operation of the new site, that this is a possibility.
I did see that and understand it, and like Matt said, we were understanding it was a small strip of land, but it seems like you're talking about somebody being able to drive a vehicle.
The purpose of the of the strip, if it is ever taken, would be to gain vehicular access to the remainder of the Glacier Everett property Glacier Drive Glacier Park, which is behind your property. That would be the purpose of the eminent domain, to provide vehicular access to and from the parcels that are behind you. I I do not expect this to take place in the near future, but I don't know what will happen ten, fifteen years from now.
Well, does this change anything that what's going on next to me with Giorgio's buildings going up?
It 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 does not, no. It would be intended to gain access to the property that's behind you, that's owned by Caruth Capital, back to Frugal Fannies, back to Beth Israel's property back there. Those parcels could someday be redeveloped, and if they were redeveloped as a single project, they would likely need access onto Everett Street, and at that time, they could propose an eminent domain taking, and the town meeting could consider it. Whether they approve it or not remains to be seen. Whether it will even come to pass remains to be seen. We just don't want to take any chance of you not being aware that this has been discussed many times in the past.
Okay, and and just for what it's worth, I'm looking at the site plan, and there's arguably enough enough um land on the east side of your property outside of the parking lot that's just um um open space right now that that access could go into the back from there, it wouldn't affect your operations at all.
So that's where that wetland is that we just discussed.
The other side. The wetlands are on the west west side. The the it's the land in between you and Mercedes that I could picture something going in.
Right. Right, where that?
Right. Yeah, I I can see my cursor, but I don't see yours. There you go. So right, yeah, so along that right sideline.
And as I said, there are no immediate plans to do anything in that regard. It's just something that was discussed in the past, and we want to make sure you're aware of it.
Okay.
Okay. Matt, I'll talk to you afterwards on it.
Okay.
So you you could explain it better to me. I don't want to take their time.
Okay.
Thank you all. Um, Maureen, I do see you have your hand up.
Yeah, um, Nora, on number seven, it said has it says uh north northwest corn instead of northwest. I'm thinking it's supposed to be corner.
Yes, it is.
Good catch. Second line. Sentence, yeah. Second line. Thank you. Uh, so we've made some changes. Do we need to reread everything, or can we just accept the amendments as discussed?
The the uh member who made the motion would have to make an amendment as discussed, and then the person who seconded it would need to second the amended motion.
Thank you.
So, Mike, you're up. Uh, you're muted.
I'm muted.
Thank you. Um, so I move to amend the motion to delete um previous uh previous paragraph number five, which has now been deleted, as we've just discussed, and to add um a new uh final paragraph um that states the applicant acknowledges that the town of Westwood may at some future date pursue plans to acquire a portion of the property by eminent domain for the purpose of providing improved roadway and or utility access to other parcels with the within the F M U O D three Glacier Everett Business District. Those two changes, I believe those are the only two changes. Okay, so I move amend those two changes.
Second. On the amendment.
I have an amended motion and a second to the amended motion. Is there any further discussion? Maureen, was your hand up a a new or is that a?
Let me know.
No, no worries. Uh, just making sure before we take a vote. Uh,
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion or its amendments? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Phil?
I.
Mike?
I.
Maureen?
I.
Tim?
I.
I vote I as well. That motion carries, and I believe we have one more on this application.
I move that the planning board close the EIDR public hearing for the change of use and exterior changes at sixty two Everett Street.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Maureen?
I.
Tim?
I.
Phil?
I.
Mike?
I.
Vote I as well. That motion carries. Uh, all right. Thank you all very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With the changes. Thank you so much. All right. Um, so our next agenda item is seven Clapford Tree Street. This is also a public hearing, so I will read a snippet to open it. The Westwood Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing on December second, twenty twenty five, at seven PM via Zoom regarding an application filed by Temple Beth David consideration of a limited environmental impact and design review approval pursuant to section seven point two point three of the Westwood zoning bylaw as an exempt use under MGL Chapter forty A, Section three, for the purposes of installing a two by three foot sign within the public right of way adjacent to the property at seven Clapford Tree Street, Westwood, Mass. M. Uh, oh, two, oh, nine, oh, in accordance with P B dash two, five, dash five, two. The property is in the single-residence C S R C zoning district and within wireless communications overlay district W C O D, land-affected assessors map twenty eight, lot three, two, nine. Property owner Temple Beth David of Dedham dash Westwood, Inc. All right.
Good evening. Um, I introduce myself to you all over again.
Nice to see you still here. All right, so you're representing this applicant as well?
I am.
All right, uh, the floor is yours to share.
It is. It is a really funny coincidence. As you know, here I've had my law office here in in Dedham since nineteen ninety four. I've lived in Westwood since nineteen eighty five. I've been in front of the planning board and other Westwood boards any number of times over the years, but it it's been a while, and so go figure here. You know, I have two of them on one night.
What night?
Um, so Temple Beth David, um, uh, a little bit of history. Um, Temple Beth David built the temple on this location on Clapford Tree Street and Pond Street at the the corner there in nineteen eighty eight after its prior building that's at the corner of Pond Street and Route one oh nine was burned down by arson. Uh, so the current building was finished in nineteen eighty eight, and the sign that um that's there now has been there ever since the building was built in nineteen eighty eight. Um, we went through the site plan review process, C I D R, in two thousand three, I think it is, it might have been two thousand two to build the current addition, the education wing on the temple, when I was the attorney for the temple at that time as well, and the sign is shown on the the two thousand two site plan as an existing condition with no changes proposed. Uh, the the sign's kind of old now, and we'd like to replace it as we went through the process with staff. Staff went through all of the different actual permits and concluded that that although the sign has been there, there was never actually an official approval to place the sign where it is and um either by the board or by the Board of Selectmen, and so that we would need to go through the the EIDR. the E I D R process in order to get approval to have it. And what the temple's actually proposing, and I can, I can share the the site plan if you want, but um, uh, we're actually proposing to have have the sign moved two feet closer to the um, to the property boundary um, so so that it no longer overhangs the sidewalk. So there's the interesting little twist. Is that at the time when the sign was first put in, there was no sidewalk there. The town built the sidewalk and the sign was then overhanging the sidewalk by a little bit. And so the impetus here was partly because the sign's getting old and partly because the temple said, well, we ought to move our sign so that it doesn't overhang the sidewalk anymore. And then it became this complicated process to actually come here and get the I D R approval so we could move the sign. You have one post that's four, four by four, so that's the only thing that's touching the ground, and it'll move two feet closer to the to the to the sideline of the right of way. And once we have, assuming we get the planning board's approval to do this, then we'll go to the board of selectmen and ask for the license to put the sign um, uh, within the right of way. And so to the obvious question, why don't we just put the sign entirely on our own property? And the answer is that there are a whole lot of trees between the property line and the the sidewalk. And so if we were to put the sign entirely on our own property, we'd have to cut down a whole bunch of trees in order for anybody to see it. And we'd rather not cut down the trees.
Yeah, I would rather you not cut down the trees too. So um, thank you. I'm sorry, uh, if you weren't done, I just.
I I'm I'm happy. I'm happy to show the graphic of what the sign would look like if anybody, you know, I I think you have that in the materials. Um, so if you if you'd like me to share it, I will. Otherwise, let's, I'm I'm happy to take any questions the board has.
Thank you. Um, I think as this is, you know, for the public and whatnot, if someone wants to share the graphic, it's probably worthwhile. And Nora, I see your hand up.
Yes, so I just wanted to just clarify for anyone who's wondering, why is this coming before you? Normally, an application for a sign that doesn't meet all the zoning bylaw standards, like the setback from the roadway, it normally goes to the Z B A for a special permit. But because Temple Beth David is a nonprofit that's covered by the Dover Amendment, we cannot ask them to get a special permit. So we substitute the planning board's E I D R process for the special permit process, and then we send it to the um, the the uh, select board with the planning board approval, at which point they can consider the license that's needed. So it's just a little bit different.
Clarification, Nora. I I skipped that part of it.
Yeah, thank you. It is. It's a little different than the usual process, so thank you for that clarification. Um, any other staff comments? Good segue there.
Uh, I guess just um, I'll share a picture of the um, the sign. And then if the board is so inclined after discussion of the, there are the kind of standard conditions uh, with the exception of one that um, is related to getting a license by the select board.
Okay, I I'd like to share my screen because I can show you the graphic of what the new sign would look like.
All right.
There we go. So just a little bit different graphics. Um, but from the 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 photograph that was just shared, just picture the post, this post just being shifted back two feet closer into our property, closer to our property. That's it.
Thank you. I do see some board member hands up. Um, Maureen, I think was first.
Very simple. And there is nowhere else that you think it would be better placed?
There's. There really isn't. Yeah, there really isn't. We we looked at, we looked at the potential to put it on the other side of the of the driveway and and then we'd be interfering with with the turns. Um, so this is the right place to have it so that it's at least close enough to the driveway for people to to recognize yours where you would turn. And if we put it any further back, um, actually, the photograph that you just saw, you had just a little hint of of a big tree that's 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 just just starting to block it. Um, if we push it any further back towards the property line, it'll be blocked by the tree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Phil, I think you you had your hand up next.
Uh, yeah, just, uh, Nord, the setback is not governed by the Dover Amendment. Is that correct? Or it is?
No, the set setback is not governed by the Dover Amendment. They have to meet setback requirements. However, the the zoning bylaw has a provision for uh, reduction of the setback requirement for a sign, not for a building.
Okay.
A building would require variance. A sign requires only a special permit, but we can't ask them to get a special permit. So this E I D R approval, limited E I D R approval substitutes for the special permit that would otherwise be required. It just assures us that some board has looked at this and confirmed that it's not a problem.
Right. And and just a little, little, if I may, a little bit of context. So there there are other religious institutions that have their signs within the the road right of way. I think the Baptist Church is an example, has one. Um, their situation is a bit different. They don't have any trees, and so their sign is is parallel to the road rather than horizontal to it. Um, so.
I I was just, my question was more just on the application of the Dover Amendment as to this particular situation.
Yeah, so we went through this maybe about three or four years ago, the um, First Parish Church on Manhattan, near uh, Clapwood Tree needed to move their sign, and they moved it onto town property. We went through the exact same procedure where we brought it to the planning board, got limited E I D R approval, then brought it to the select board who granted a license.
Got it. Okay, that just one clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim.
Just a quick question. I I noticed I can't picture the sign driving through at night. It looks like I saw a light in the picture, um, but I didn't see a light in the rendering. Is it, will the the new I I I saw a reference to tied to an electrical poster that was that the new light will take place on that new sign as well?
Yes, it's their, the intention is to have the same, the same type of lights shining in it.
Thank you. Any other board member questions? I actually appreciate that by shifting it back, it it's no longer tickling the sidewalk, because that that is, um, it's it's nice and visible, but definitely I've actually walked by there and if I'm not paying attention, I've almost walked into it. So I actually appreciate the shift further away from the sidewalk. I think that's a positive. Um. All right, uh, as this is a public hearing, I will open the floor up to public participation. If there's any members of the public that would like to comment or have a question on this particular application, please raise your hand. Or you can enter it into the Q and A portion of the Zoom application. We would just need your full name and address to be able to address your comment. I'll give that a minute. I am not seeing anything, so if there's no further discussion amongst board members or staff, I would start to entertain motions.
I'll go. I move that the planning board grant the following waiver in association with the L E I D R application for the installation of a two foot by three foot per end two foot by three foot sign within the public right of way adjacent to the property at seven clapboards clapboard tree street, as described in the application, therefore submitted to the planning board and filed in the office of the town clerk on October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five. One waiver from strict compliance with section seven point two point thirteen of the Westwood zoning bylaw related to fees.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Tim.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Phil.
Hi.
Maureen.
I.
I vote I as well. That motion carries.
I move that the planning board grant limited environmental impact and design review L E I D R approval for the installation of a two foot by three foot sign within the public right of way adjacent to the property at seven clapboard tree street as described in the application, therefore submitted to the planning board and filed in the office of the town clerk on October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, subject to the following conditions. General, one, except as modified by the conditions and finding hereof, the project shall comply with the project plans and with the condition of all prior decisions for the property in all respects. And the applicant shall pursue completion of the project with reasonable diligence and continuity. Two, if the project or any condition imposed in this decision requires any other permit, license, or other approval from any town of Westwood board, commission, or agency or other Commonwealth or federal regulatory agency, the applicant shall make an appropriate application for the same and shall obtain all required approvals prior to the start of any work. If any condition of such permit, license, or other approval from any other board, committee, or agency is inconsistent with this decision, the applicant shall make application to the planning board for an amendment of this decision. And the planning board shall consider such application in accordance with the requirements of M G L chapter forty A, section nine and all applicable planning board rules and regulations. Three, any proposed alterations, modifications, deletions, or changes to the to the decision shall be requested in writing to the town planner and building commissioner prior to implementation. A, proposed alterations which are considered de minimis by the building commissioner may be accepted as a note to the file. Can we scroll? B, proposed alterations which are considered minor by the building commissioner shall require the filing of a modification application of set approval for review by the planning board at a publicly posted planning board meeting. C, proposed alterations which are determined to be major by the building commissioner or by the planning board shall be considered by the planning board as a formal amendment to the approval and will require a new public hearing before the planning board. Four, the decision shall become effective only upon the issuance of a license by the select board to permit the installation of the proposed sign within the public right of way along Clapboard Tree Street. Five, the decision shall lapse if a substantial use thereof or construction thereunder has not begun, except for good cause within two years following the grant thereof. The planning board may extend such approval for good cause within the written request of the applicant, upon the written request of the applicant during construction. Six, all project-related construction activities shall comply with comply with the timeframe set forth in the town's general bylaws, chapter two ninety-two for noise and construction, which allows such work Monday through Saturday between the hours of seven A M and seven P M and Sunday between the hours of twelve P M and seven P M. Seven, copy of this decision and the project plan shall be kept on the project site at all times during construction.
Second.
Sorry, I was on mute. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will take roll call. Tim. Phil.
Hi.
Maureen.
I.
Mike.
Hi.
Vote I as well. That motion carries. I believe we have one more.
I move that the planning board close the L E I D R public hearing for the installation of a sign within the public right of way adjacent to the property at seven clapboard tree street.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Phil.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Maureen.
I.
Tim. We didn't hear you, Tim.
Hi.
Thanks. I vote I as well. Uh, that motion carries. Thank you very much.
You. Thank you, folks. Have a good evening and happy holidays.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And then our next agenda item, number three, is one hundred Station Drive. Sorry, I'm just catching up here. Consideration of proposed minor modification to project development review, P D R approval for Home Two Hotel at one hundred Station Drive. Uh, do we have anyone here representing the applicant? Or oh, yes, looks like someone's coming in. All right.
Hello, and Nora, if you could just admit, uh, Paul Oliver, he should be on the line too, and will be uh, joining as a panelist.
I just added him.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, it looks like we have Paul. So I just wanted to thank everybody for taking the time to hear our minor modification. Um, I'm gonna let Paul do most of the speaking. Uh, but we provided a brief background letter. Um, we brought our minor modification plan to the board back in September, which was approved. Um, we then went to the town commissioner in November to kind of begin um, project mobilization. And it was brought to our attention that some of the um, changes we made to our original uh, P D R should just be re-reviewed by the um, planning board in case there's any outstanding questions. And with that, I will uh, turn to Paul for a brief description of uh, those changes.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Olivera, you're on mute.
Okay, my apologies.
No worries.
Thanks, everyone. Um, I had a meeting with the building commissioner and some inspectors, and Nora was there. And she had said that the board had approved uh, the changes we had requested, but maybe they need to be clarified in this meeting. So we're happy to do that. So some of the questions that were raised uh, in a letter uh, from Steve or that Steve uh, presented Nora. One of them was the L E D light strip uh, which is a brand requirement on the beacon of the hotel. Uh, I don't have the plans available to me, but it's just a minor strip of L E D lighting on the east side of the hotel. There will be no lighting, uh, no uplighting or any other lighting uh, on the other sides of the hotel, including the back uh, and the sides, which may interfere uh, with the people, the residents on the backside of Station Drive. Thank you. Uh, so that's it. Uh, in regards to the windows, uh, the Hilton brand required a certain type of window. The architect made the modifications to it. It really is a very de minimis change, but again, we want to get your approval on it. Uh, same thing with the cornice detail. Uh, because of the parapet, which again remains within the height limitations, there was a minor modification to that, which again, we don't feel is, you know, much, but again, want your approval on it. Uh, other than that, uh, the other items to be brought up, I think, was we added the uh, numbers on the front of the hotel. Uh, which again was a requirement by you, and I think, I think that is it. Nora, if you can let me know if we've covered all the items.
I think the only other change was slight uh, changes to the profile of cornices and um uh, the places where the different sections of the building meet, just slight differences in the profiles.
You're right, right. And that was something done by architect. Um, again, they're relatively minor, but take a look and let us know if you have any questions. Again, the overall plan and look at the hotel complies with the original approvals back in twenty twenty-two. And again, we presented this in September of twenty twenty-five. And we thought we had received the board's approval, but Nora, who has done an outstanding job, just wanted to make sure that we're in full compliance. And that's why we're here tonight.
And then just the only other thing, Paul, is the uh, uh, on our original P D R, um, we didn't have specifically uh, specified specifications for ethos color. Uh, so now that we have a hundred percent construction drawings and a uh, manufacturer of the coloring, we further define the actual colors uh, that will be built. So it's largely the same, it's just actually specified now.
Thank you. Um, all right. Uh, any comments or uh, questions from staff?
I I would just point out that the application for a building permit is in process, and if the board has no objection to these modifications, we can proceed quickly. Um, and we should see this hotel start to go up very soon.
Thank you. All right. Um, any board member questions or comments?
Ellen, I I just have a question for the staff. I just want to confirm, um, you know, you have no hesitations about the extra lighting. It's not going to interfere with the residents behind them. That was just my only um, kind of not concern, but just thought that I wanted to can double confirm with you before, before voting on this.
So so the the new lighting is only on the east side, so it definitely will not um, be a problem for the residential neighborhoods that are uh, to the west of University Station. It may be visible from some apartments within the Gables complex, and for that reason, I have a condition, uh, draft condition for you to consider that would have us take a look at it thirty days after um, the building is occupied. And if there seems to be a problem with it, that we could revisit it. Uh, my suggestion is maybe they limit the hours that the the light is turned on. Another option would be maybe they uh, consider the brightness of the light. If it becomes Another option would be maybe they, uh, consider the brightness of the light. If it becomes a problem, I don't expect that it will be. We have similar lighting on, um, uh, the bank. Is it Rockland Savings, I think, is the bank that's in University Station, so that's a little bit further over. But that lighting is around all four sides of the bank building, and that's visible from Gables, and we have never received any complaints.
Okay, that makes sense.
Just for clarification, it's nothing but an LED strip that runs along the top of the beacon, so it's more decorative than, than anything else.
Okay, okay, perfect.
Thank you. Any other? Yeah, yeah, I see. Okay.
I see, I see.
There it is.
Okay. I, I was just gonna say, because of the distance, I didn't think it was gonna be that much of an impact, but now that, that the visual helps.
There any other, uh, questions or, Maureen? Yes, sorry.
Uh, you're muted.
The revisions were pretty much because of what Hilton's branding now is, and that's why we you did a lot of the changing to like the windows and the beacon and the cornice. Well, the cornice, it says, because of the structural engineer.
Yeah, so it was partly, uh, the branding, but it's also because there was a change in the type of construction. This is now modular construction, which was not considered back in twenty twenty-two.
And they changed the size of it a little bit also, or no?
Slight changes in the dimensions.
Very, very minimal.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member questions or comments? Uh, I actually really like the revised colors and design. I, I actually think it looks quite nice. Um, so I, I I am pleased with the changes. I think it, it is in, uh, in alignment with the aesthetic that we like to see at University Station, and, um, I think it looks really nice. So, um, I have nothing else.
Any updates on the timing?
Uh, hopefully break ground, uh, this winter and get a found, get a foundation in, and hopefully you'll see something of substance probably in the spring and summer.
Excellent.
Great. Okay, great.
All right. Um, if there are no other staff, board, or any, uh, comments or discussion, um, I would happily entertain a motion.
Oh. Can we just read this one?
Uh, I, Tim Elliott, moved that the planning board grant that requested project development review, PDR approval for one hundred Station Drive as described in the application, therefore submitted to the planning board and filed in the office of the town clerk on December second, two thousand twenty-five, subject to the following conditions. Except as modified by the conditions and findings hereof, the project shall comply with the project plans and with the condition prior decisions for the property in all respects, and the applicant shall pursue completion of the project with reasonable diligence and continuity. If the project or any condition imposed in this decision requires any other permit, license, or other approval from any town of Westwood board, commission, or agency, or other Commonwealth or federal regulatory agency, the applicant shall make an appropriate application for the same and shall obtain all required approvals prior to the start of any work. If any condition of such permit, license, or other approval from any other board, committee, or agency is inconsistent with this decision, the applicant shall make application to the planning board for an amendment of this decision, and the planning board shall consider such application in accordance with the requirements of MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, and all applicable planning board rules and regulations. Any proposed alterations, modifications, deletions, or changes to the decision shall be requested in writing to the town planner and building commissioner prior to implementation. Proposed alterations which are considered de minimis by the building commissioner may be accepted as a note to the file. Proposed alterations which are considered minor by the building commissioner shall require the filing of a modification application of said approval for review by the planning board at a publicly posted planning board meeting. Proposed alterations which are determined to be major by the building commissioner or by the planning board shall be considered by the planning board as a formal amendment to the approval and will require a new public hearing before the planning board. The decision shall lapse if a substantial use thereof or construction thereunder has not begun, except for good cause within two years following the grant thereof. The planning board may extend such approval for good cause upon the written request of the applicant during construction. Copy of this decision and the project plan shall be kept on the project site at all times during construction, during operation. Within thirty days of the start of operation of the hotel, the beacon lighting element shall be reviewed by the town planner. The town planner determines that the beacon lighting element has been disruptive to nearby residential properties. The applicant shall have the option of removing the beacon lighting element or eliminating the use of said lighting element between the hours of ten PM and six AM.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Maureen?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. That motion carries. Excellent. Um, best of luck. Looking forward to seeing that, uh, move forward. Hopefully, we've made that a little easier.
Thank you, everyone. Yes, thanks, Elijah. Thanks, thanks, all the planning board. Hope you have a happy holidays.
Thank you.
You too.
I know, thank you.
Good night.
All right. Our next agenda item is five forty-one High Street. Consideration of an approval not required A and R plan to convey land from one parcel to another at five forty-one High Street. Uh, do we have anyone representing the applicant, or is our staff going to take the lead here?
Uh, yes, so, uh, we have been in discussion with the applicant. Uh, this is a, um, a plan to, uh, essentially add a parcel of land into, um, to, from one, uh, neighboring parcel to the other, uh, both of which are, uh, under , um, an ownership. The um, applicant is not here tonight. Um, I will see if I can share. Um, really, this is a, a small fifteen hundred, um, square foot parcel of land that, uh, will not be buildable lot. Uh, however, there are some, uh, needs to update the, uh, A and R plan itself before the board can consider it for endorsement. And so, uh, we have had that discussion with the applicant. They're under, they understand what, uh, changes do need to be made and are, uh, if it is the board's, um, uh, uh, consideration, uh, we can take it up, um, at the, uh, at the December sixteenth meeting. Uh, we do have to, as the board needs to, uh, make a decision for A and R plans or also be constructively approved. So, um, uh, we do have to make a motion, um, and I would suggest not endorsing the plan as approved. Um, there are, uh, some items such as, um, the lot is, uh, labeled like not a buildable lot at this time. It would, uh, better be revised to, uh, not a buildable lot. Uh, the current land, um, square footage, uh, what is current and what is proposed needs to be included on the plan as well as, uh, uh, notation, um, for the intent of the plan. And so, um, there is a, uh, condition of the board is so, uh, inclined to, uh, convey that.
Thank you. So we do not have authorization from the, uh, the pro, the applicant to just continue. We would, we need to take action tonight.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, just clarifying that. Okay. Um, all right. Thank you. Um, any comments or questions from board members? I'm not seeing any. Uh, this seems fairly straightforward to me unless anyone had something to ask or add. Um, it, it seems like the correct thing to do is to not endorse it at this time because it is incomplete and not in compliance with our regulations, so, um.
Yeah, am I missing something, but that seems straightforward?
Agree.
Okay.
All right. Um, then I would entertain a motion.
I move that the planning board find the approval not required application for five forty-one High Street dated November eleven, twenty twenty-five with approval not required plan dated October twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five with revision, revisions through December one, twenty twenty-five to be incomplete and inconsistent with the planning board's regulations pertaining to approval not required plans. And that the board vote not to endorse the submitted plan is not requiring approval under the subdivision control laws unless said plan is revised as follows, with a new Mylar and paper copies reflecting such revisions submitted to the town planner for endorsement. One, the noted display on current parcel map nine plot one seventeen, which reads not a buildable lot at this time, shall be revised to read not a billable lot, buildable. Two, current lot area and proposed lot area values shall be shown for both map oh nine, plot one sixteen, and map oh nine, plot one seventeen. Three, the note which currently reads, the intent of this plan is to, to vote, to divide plot one seventeen into two lots shown as lot one sixteen B and one seventeen A. Lot one seventeen A is labeled not a buildable lot. Lot one sixteen B is to be conveyed with a budding land at plot one sixteen shall be removed and a new note shall be added to read. The intent of this plan is to div, to divide current map oh nine, plot one seventeen into two lots shown as lot one sixteen B and lot one seventeen A. Lot one sixteen B is to be combined, combined with map oh nine, plot one sixteen, such that the new area of map oh nine, plot one sixteen will be twenty thousand two hundred and thirty-one square feet.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Mike?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. That motion carries.
I just want to make it clear to the board that that means that the applicant does not have to come at your next meeting if they make those changes to the plan. If they make those changes, Elijah will review it and just let you know if the, um, Mylar's ready for signature. If they don't want to make those specific changes, and they want to do it achieve compliance in a different matter, then they would have to come back.
Okay, thank you.
Would they achieve compliance, Nora, other than?
So if the language isn't exactly what they, if they think there's a better, better way of spelling out exactly what they're doing, um, you know, surveyors all, all approach A and R plans from a different perspective. So there are different ways of achieving compliance with our standards. And if they want to achieve compliance in a way that's not specifically laid out there, then it'll come back and you'll review it.
And then we'll see it again. Okay.
Thank you. All right. Um, our next agenda item is, I have like five thousand windows open. Uh, number five, housing production plan. I know we are going to immediately continue this, but as it is a public hearing, I will read a snippet of the notice to open it. The Westwood Planning Board will hold two remote public hearings on Tuesday, December second, twenty twenty-five at seven PM via Zoom as follows. Housing production plan, public hearing. The first public hearing will involve an update to the town of Westwood housing production plan, which was initially adopted by the planning board on December nineteenth, twenty nineteen. The purpose of this public hearing is for the planning board to receive questions and comments from interested residents before considering adoption of the proposed updated housing production plan. I guess I read the whole thing. Um, so as we are going to continue this immediately without discussion, do we have a motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
I move that the planning board continue the public hearing for the twenty twenty-five housing production plan to the planning board meeting, which will be held via Zoom on Tuesday, February twenty-five, twenty twenty-six at seven PM, where a Zoom link and associated call-in numbers will be provided on the town's calendar on the homepage at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash www dot townhall dot westwood dot MA dot US forward slash.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Maureen?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Tim?
The.
Thank you. Uh, I vote aye as well. That motion carries. All right. Uh, next agenda item, uh, number six. Consideration of appointment to Design Guidelines Task Force.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, so, um, the Design Guidelines Task Force had their first meeting on October eighth. Um, we did have a member of the public, Trevor Lovenstein, who um, joined and, uh, expressed his interest in joining, uh, the task force. He has, uh, experience, uh, as an architect and, uh, was a planning board member during the Islington Center redevelopment, so, um, uh, definitely think that his experience and his, uh, his expertise would, uh, lend itself to the task force. He sent a letter of intent and resume to the planning board, and so, um, it is for you uh, for consideration to appoint him to the, the task force.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members?
I would endorse some, the, these would be a great addition.
Thank, yeah, I agree with that. Um, I think Trevor is a really excellent fit, ticks a bunch of boxes, and I'm grateful that he's willing to volunteer his time to this effort. So I, um, I also would endorse his, um, appointment.
I had a nice chat with him at the first meeting, and it was definitely would be a strong appointment.
Excellent. Any further discussion on this appointment?
No.
All right, then I would entertain a motion.
I move that the planning board vote to appoint Trevor Lovenstein as a member of the Design Guidelines Task Force.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Maureen?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. That motion carries. All right, great. Excellent. All right, so our next agenda item is rules and regulations, and this is a public hearing, so I will read the notice. The Westwood Planning Board will hold two remote public hearings on Tuesday, December second, twenty twenty-five at seven PM via Zoom as follows. The second public hearing will involve updates and revisions to various sets of planning board's rules, regulations, standards, guidelines, and meeting procedures, which were previously adopted to guide the administration of the board's responsibilities pursuant to the zoning act, MGL Chapter forty A, the subdivision control law, MGL Chapter forty-one, Sections eighty-one K through eighty-one GG, and the scenic roads act, MGL Chapter forty, Section fifteen C. The board will also consider new rules, regulations, standards, guidelines, and meeting procedures. The purpose of this public hearing is for the planning board to receive questions and comments from interested residents before considering adoption of the various proposed rules, regulations, standards, and guidelines. All right. Um, staff?
I could just make a time check. If I was able to make the nine forty train, I would be a real happy camper. Just as, just as a suggestion for guiding us in our discussion.
Yes. That's a, that's a worthy goal. All right, let's see. Uh, okay.
I would say it's more than worthy.
A lofty goal.
A lofty goal.
More than aspirational.
So how about, how about if I try to?
You lead. Nora, you, you're, you're nice and efficient.
How about if I try to just walk you through exactly what we put before you, and then you can ask any questions you have? So a lot of these rules and regulations were reviewed by the board in December of twenty twenty-three, and most of them were approved. They were changes to procedures and, um, language in the various sets of regulations primarily intended to recognize that the town had changed our format for permitting approvals from a paper approval process to an electronic approval process. So that's the majority of the changes. There were other changes to bring consistency between the various sets of regulations and how we use certain terms for peer review, for project review fees, for various terms, so they'd be consistent through all the regulations. So there are a couple of different things. There are sets of regulations that already exist that we proposed amendments to. Those include the EIDR rules and regulations, the special permit rules and regulations, the University Avenue mixed-use district rules and regulations, scenic road rules and regulations, um, and regulations governing the subdivision of land. Then there were new sets of rules and regulations that we didn't have for, um, for approvals that are no longer board approvals, that are administrative approval, including Including earth material movement approval, rules and regulations. And solar design review approval rules and regulations, which is actually a mix of board approval and administrative approval, depending on what's. What the project calls for. Then we had two other new sets that just had not been addressed. One is the access approval. Overlay District Rules and Regulations. That's a section of our bylaw that's rarely used and we had no regulations to address it. Um, and then we had uh, some uh. Design Guidelines and Standards. They were updated. One is the automobile parking design standards. Another is the bicycle parking design guidelines and the traffic study design guidelines. Those three documents, again, the changes are just for consistency, no significant changes. And then finally, we have two documents that are not in your packet yet that we're still working on. That we're proposing as something new that the board has not had before. One is sidewalk driveway transition standards. This came up um, with the Lords and Ladies Project on uh, at one ninety Washington Street. Where there was discussion about how the sidewalk driveway transitions to the road and. And the how the sidewalk is supposed to be paramount and maintain its um, its elevation. And the driveway is supposed to fall to the road. Independent, right? So that it, so that the the cur- the curvature is in the driveway itself and not. With the sidewalk. So. Our building commissioner has produced drawings that we can use to this effect that specifies different standards for driveway. Um, transition and curbing transition for the board to specify. When it reviews a project in the future where this comes into play, there'll be no confusion you because you can point to. You use standard A, you use standard B, you use standard C, and you'll know exactly what you're going to get. So. That's a set of regulations that we haven't fully drafted. We'll have it for you. At your next hearing session on the sixteenth. And then the other one is planning board meeting procedures. We discussed this a little, but we're still drafting it. These would be procedures um, to help make sure your meetings don't go until midnight. Uh, to make sure that there's a way to limit applications that are before the board on any particular night. But also procedures that make clear to applicants exactly how you will review review. Projects. So a lot of the things that Ellen reads at the beginning of the meeting, they'll fall within these uh. Officially adopted standards. It's another document that will come to you at your next hearing session. So if anyone has had time to review the various sets. Uh, the redline version, you can see the changes that are proposed. Most of them are insignificant, but they they affect procedure. If board members wish to make more significant changes to any of the documents, just let us know and staff will incorporate them. If you're interested in reconsidering fees for the different applications. Staff can do that as well. Right now we have not proposed any changes to fees. So that that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, board members, questions, comments? Discussion?
I had a comment. Um, I think that all sounds great. I was curious if, so a few months ago, I sort of broached the topic of. Maybe trying to have one or two um, meetings sort of hybrid in person. You know, and obviously remote. Um. You know, I would like, I would kind of connect it to if we're um, seeing or reviewing a plan of, you know, you know, high. Kind of public um, interest or something like that. I just think it would be fun. It would be a good civic. Kind of exercise to do to me to meet in person at least once or twice if there was a big issue that. You know, we could spread out um, like a map, you know, across the room and we could kind of look at it and debate it and discuss it and. Members of the public could participate remotely or in person. Just an idea. I wanted to throw that out there. I don't know if that would be connected with these changes and. How the board operates. Um, even if we put it in as like a goal. Uh, you know, I think it would be a, you know, I would propose to do something like that, so.
So so to be clear, your remote operations. Possibility is set to expire in twenty twenty-seven. We don't know if there'll be changes that allow it to continue beyond that. Um, so we can, we can address it in a manner that. It sunsets, I suppose, if those regulations don't change. Another point I just want to make is. Having an in-person meeting or a Zoom meeting, either one of those work fine. Having a hybrid meeting is a little bit more difficult because we currently only have one place in town. That's um, capable of hybrid meetings and that is the small conference room at the library.
Yeah, we talked about that. Yeah, we talked about that last time, that difficulty. I don't know if that's been. If if that's been made less difficult over the last six months. Um, but yeah.
Not yet.
Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, I'm just throwing it out there for discussion again and just keep thinking about it, you know?
I love the in-person aspect too. Um, but I think the, there's a huge downside to not allowing. Uh, remote access because there's a lot of people that are just unable to attend on an in-person basis that. May still have the ability to attend, you know, you know, remotely, so. Um. The expansion of the hybrid option would be the, you know, the best scenario, I think, if that was possible. But I I agree. I love, I love the idea of getting together.
And it could come a time where we have a larger space that's hybrid. Capacity enabled, but that's not the case today.
Hmm. Okay.
But what we can do is when we work on the planning board procedures document, we can add a section on um. How the chair will determine what format the meeting will take.
Okay.
Great. Yes, I would enjoy sitting around a table with you all, particularly if we had like large Mylar plans to review. There's. A value add there, but I I'm also sensitive to not making it. Difficult or impossible for some residents to attend. So um, hybrid seems like a really good option if there's a way to. Do that successfully in a space that works. So I think that's a good option to keep on the table.
Nora. Do the um, rules and regulations get like? Updated? Like is December always the time of year we look at those or can it be done at other?
It it could be done anytime as long as it's advertised for a public hearing. Traditionally, it's done towards the end of the year because you're less busy with development reviews at this time, but. It can be done anytime as long as we advertise for a public hearing. So one of the, one of the sets of rules and regulations that the board over the past two years. And even when it was a, when the full sets were approved by the board in twenty twenty-three, there was discussion of. Reconsidering the scenic rules and regulations and seeing if there was a way that the planning board wanted to beef those up a little bit. Um, that's still an option. That could be covered in the hearing notice that that has been. Uh, advertised that you, tonight's your first night of the hearing. After this discussion, you can continue until December sixteenth. If you're ready to approve the uh, regulation standards and guidelines, then you can. And if you're not, you can continue it further. But if you want more changes to any set scenic. Road regulations or anything else that you feel that there's more substantive changes that are needed. You can just let the staff know and we'd be happy to draft them.
Okay.
That's it. I was gonna raise that question as well, specifically to. The trap, when I was reviewing all of these, the. The traffic study guidelines in particular, I I just noted that some of these are relatively stale. Uh, um. The traffic study guidelines, you know, as of twenty thirteen, right? And and some of the. Requirements for what triggers a study are static numbers, not just percentages. And and I think we can all agree that. Certain parts of town are much different now than they were twelve years ago. Um, so I just, just thinking through. You know, what, uh, maybe I'm extra cognizant to it, just given, uh, you know, one of the uh, ongoing. Construction and development uh, on the Islington side of town. I just, I, I noticed on personal, from a personal perspective, a lot of traffic becoming more and more of an issue. Um, so just thinking through what what we could do on our end to. Make sure that we have adequate coverage from a traffic study perspective, um, making sure that we're. We're looking at that closely because I, it's, it's becoming a concern for me as the, as. I see some of these buildings going up and it's, it's great to see everything developing, but it's also, there's, there's some side effects and we gotta just make sure that it come.
Yeah, I agree. And was that a new, um, was the traffic?
No, that that dates back to twenty thirteen. That was the last time that one was updated.
Oh, so that's an oldie.
It is.
Okay.
Like some of the requirements are percentage based, so that I think that's good, but others are against static or. Numbers, right? A, a number of movements. Number of trips and and I'm sure in certain areas that that's changed quite a bit, so.
So what you would like us to do is kind of look at them and make sure there's nothing that's not. That we feel should be changed or updated and give you that feedback?
Yes, because this is your chance while the hearing notice is open. You can make any changes that you would like. Um, as long as a minimum of three members support those changes, they can be made. Um, a- and if there's any set of regulations that you think are fine as they are, you can vote for them as they are. So um. This is our opportunity. We do it every few years. Um, and this is, this is the chance you have now to update things however you'd like.
Can I ask a clarifying question though for some of these? Like I, I, I don't have the experience or knowledge to. What, what is the right number, right? To, to make sure that we, we feel like we have. You know, adequate. Coverage of what triggers a, a study where and when. So is that where we can get support from, from staff to?
Yes.
Guide, okay.
Yeah, so right now a trap, so with E I D R approvals and with special permits, a traffic study is a requirement. For any application unless the board waives it. The traffic study guidelines are to help the planning board decide whether or not they want to waive it, but never would it obligate you to waive. A traffic study. So you always have that option.
So with the new um, place that just went on. Um, Everett Street. Did they have, they did, I saw that traffic study in there and that's something that was um.
There was a waiver.
You, you waived, you waived the traffic study for that application in recognition of the new business not being substantially more. Uh, traffic dependent than the old business. But you didn't have to. I- in all cases, you can require a traffic study no matter what. The board typically waives them because they're very expensive, so unless you anticipate um. A, a significant change in traffic and a way to address that change in traffic. You usually waive it.
And um, in that case for the Everett Street, we did. Require them to submit a traffic memo that, you know, added, you know, included counts. So in some cases. If a full traffic study isn't uh, necessarily uh, something that. The applicant can take on, we do try to get them to provide some type of information and uh, research.
Which is usually a comparison from the former use to the proposed use and it usually takes into account. Other development that's occurred in between the former use coming into play and the new use. In some cases, there'll be a project that um, you're working on where. You just received a traffic study for a half a mile down the road. And you won't require a traffic study for the new one, a full traffic study for the new one, because you'll use the information that you already received.
That makes sense, yeah. Okay.
All right, I didn't mean to derail. That's just one that stuck out to me. I, I would, I think it would be worthy of, of taking a, a closer look at. I don't have any specific guidance yet, but.
We can ask, um, the, the D P W department uses a consulting engineer from Beta and they have traffic engineers. We can ask them to. Take a look at the traffic study guidelines and give us some suggestions for how they would recommend updating that.
Traffic is always a constant issue in many, many ways.
It is.
Agreed.
All parts of town.
And um. How do you, and just one of, one last question, how do you come up with what you charge for fees? Like?
So um, the fees are. There have been times over the last twenty years or so where there have been studies done of neighboring communities to see. What fees they charge and to see how we fall in line with them. Um, but we also. Take a look at our fees and try and estimate. The staff time costs that are involved in the review of the application. And take that into account and how we determine the fees. Uh, so something that's very labor intensive like a uh, new subdivision approval. Has a significantly higher fee than a limited E I D R approval, which. Is much simpler and requires far fewer hours. We don't raise our fees significantly. From year to year because those. The staff costs don't go up that much. Um. In some cases, we should, I, we probably should take a look at these fees because it has been at least ten years, I believe. Since we adopted a whole new fee schedule. So that's something that I will be doing in the next. Two weeks, just taking a look at some of our neighboring communities, see what their fees are, see how far we are in line to them and then. Um, recommend some changes, but I probably would not recommend increasing all fees. Um. We don't want to stick it to the businesses if we don't have to.
The fees are so much of a de minimis cost and if somebody's gonna really do something, but the, it depends on the scope, obviously. If it's a. Small signage change compared to.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-two average.
Yeah, and in addition, for the larger projects, we always require peer review services and those services are fully paid by the applicant outside of the fees.
Right. Madam Chair, there's a hand up.
Ah, yes, Ms. Cole.
Thank you for seeing me. The only thing I wanted to say, Nora, just talking about fees, and I was thinking about this. I know you had said that the posting has become expensive to post things on. In the newspapers and stuff. Would that be something that you would consider as a? Fee that's gone up?
Posting is expensive, but the applicant pays for the posting.
Okay, all right. Just making sure.
We pay for mailing to a butters and that has gone up. The cost of a stamp has gone up. Tremendously actually over the last ten years, but the advertisement is the, is the big cost. And where it used to cost an applicant maybe three hundred dollars for the uh, newspaper ad. It's now closer to a thousand. That is outside of our fees and that's something the applicant pays directly.
Is there?
Because those, because those costs have gone up and because peer review costs have gone up, I'm hesitant to raise our. Town fees more than necessary.
Yeah. And if you're there in line with other towns. That's reasonable.
Okay. Checking in on the timeline, that's all.
I was just looking to, um. Well, it sounds like we're gonna continue this discussion, so we don't need to. Um, make decisions this evening, so.
But any individual applicant, uh, members, please feel free to, to, to email. Your comments or questions to Elijah and to me, and we would be happy to prepare something to share with the full board at the next meeting.
Hmm.
Excellent. Uh, all right, if there are no further board member comments, questions, or staff member comments, questions at this time, I'll open up the Florida public. Comment because it is a public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to weigh in on this topic, please raise your hand or enter your question or comment. In the Q and A, just please include your full name and address for the record. I'll give that a minute. All right, um, seeing no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to continue.
I move that the planning board continue the public hearing for amendments to various planning board. Rules and regulations, standards, guidelines and. Whoops, my screen isn't where it should be. Hold on. And meetings. We need to shift this. I'm sorry. I can't see the right side of the screen. I don't know what happened.
Oh.
It's end meeting procedures.
Thank you.
To the planning board meeting, which will be held via Zoom on Tuesday, December sixteenth.
Yes.
Twenty twenty-five at seven P M where Zoom link and associated call in numbers. Will be provided. On the town's calendar, on the homepage at H T T P S semicolon slashless. W W W dot town hall, town hall westwood dot M A dot U S slash.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Team effort. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Phil.
Hi.
Maureen.
I.
Mike.
Hi.
Tim. I think I heard an I.
Hi.
Tim, you gotta speak up there, boy. Come on. You're so quiet.
I vote I as well. Uh, that motion carries. That hearing is continued. All right, um, thank you. Our next agenda item. Is. Articles, if this loads. Continued discussion of warrant articles for the May twenty twenty-six annual town meeting continued from November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. All right. I'll hand it over to staff to uh, update us on where we're at with that.
We uh, opened this discussion at your meeting on November. Eighteenth and um, went through a list of articles that the board may be interested in considering. I know the ones that stand out to me were um, housekeeping changes, which we have year after year. Um, possible changes to the A R O district, though the board may. Um, possible changes to the A R O district, though the board may want to take some more time to consider those. Uh, changes to uh rules for adult daycare and changes to pet care facilities um to determine whether or not we want to allow um the day, day boarding, daycare of animals um in the local business districts. I believe we also discussed the potential for a um zoning bylaw change and possibly a general bylaw change related to um short-term rentals. And then I believe we had interest in some changes related to commercial indoor recreation. Am I missing anything? Was there anything else that?
Um, battery energy storage.
Yes, yes, right. Battery energy storage systems, and that comes with a model bylaw uh that Elijah can um draft from the, take the model bylaw and draft a local bylaw.
And then I think the um, uh, what's, what's it, the big, the big, uh, the the big vehicles in the driveway, the uh.
I, the pods.
The pods.
Pods, yes. So that that would be a definitional change um that would would address pods, make them structures that are eligible for temporary approval.
Excellent. So what do you need from us this evening to help move this process along?
So uh, I guess we would, uh, we'll plan to run advertisements um for uh two weeks leading up to the January seventh, I believe it is, January sixth uh public hearing. And the board will then have, will will produce initial drafts of articles we'd like the board to consider. And then the board at that hearing can discuss, debate um and alter those drafts as necessary. At some point, the board will need to vote whether they wish to proceed with all of those articles, some of those articles or none of those articles. Um, and whichever ones have support by at least three members of the board, we will fully develop and bring to the um, the Finance and Warrant Commission at the Article Sponsors Meetings in January, and then eventually to their hearings in February and in March. And all throughout that process, this will be on your agenda for every single meeting uh to continue that hearing from January sixth straight through um a meeting in April. And then you'll be able to tweak the language of each of the proposed warrant articles. So right now, our goal is to first create the ad. The ad is a very um compressed summary of each article. That has to be done by this Friday at ten A M, where it has to be sent to the newspaper. Then the next step, which is due by next Thursday, is the first draft of each article, a flushed-out draft, which can change, but it's a a placeholder, a starter, so that any residents who are interested in following along will have something to read. Um, and we try to have that posted to the meeting packet and available at the Town Clerk's Office and the Planning Office before the ad hits the paper uh next Thursday, a week from this Thursday. And then the hearing actually opens on January sixth, I believe, is the date we're targeting for the hearing. Um, and from then on, you'll just continue it and discuss it at every turn. If there's any other article you can think of, we need to know now so that we can get an ad in the paper. So if there's anything else we didn't cover in that short summary, let us know.
Thank you. And you some reliance with a list of the ones, or are they, did I miss them?
Do you, Nora, do you want to go through the list of the ones the staff has come up with? So we can just hear it, you know, literally fifteen seconds each one, so just we have a um, you gave the list last meeting, but maybe just go through that really quick, so we just have a quick understanding. Again, fifteen seconds each one, if you can do, you know.
Okay, um. Let's just give me one second to. I have, I have a list with a lot more that we weren't looking to pursue at this time, so um, just let me pare down that list.
And then I I have one to potentially add or at least raise for the board to consider.
While you're looking, I'll just share. I appreciate you um keeping the uh the bylaw proposal for the short-term rental regulation. Um, it sounds like we could, I I did a little research. Uh, there, it it's typically, it can be a two-pronged approach. There could be, need to be general by, there would need to be general bylaw changes, but um I think Brookline handles it both through the general bylaws, and there's some zoning use definitions in there. So I think we could, we could do some good there um and and help that effort on our end. So I I appreciate that we will be advertising that, and at least it gives us the space to explore it. So thank you.
Okay, so the list I have so far is best battery energy storage systems. That would be a adopting the model bylaw or some version of the model bylaw so that we could uh have our zoning bylaw determine where they're appropriate and where they're not, and how the review would proceed. A R O, this is one we'll advertise. I'm not sure if the board's ready to go forward with it, but if we don't advertise, they won't have that option. And this would include potential changes to um the A R O district in general, including changes in how the A R O districts are delineated, changes in uh buffer zones, which are not currently included in there, uh setback areas and uses. So we'll, we'll make it a very broad advertisement. Then uh short-term rental, a proposal for uh a war, two warrant articles for that one. One would be a potential zoning bylaw warrant article to um have a section on bylaw that addresses what a short-term rental is through a definition, and then a potential general bylaw article, which would involve regulation of short-term rentals. Uh, then we have adult daycare, removing the restriction of no more than twenty uh customers in an adult daycare facility. We have another one for animal daycare, introducing uh or allowing uh animal daycare by special permit, either by Z B A special permit or planning board special permit in the local business districts. We have a definition change, which at a minimum will include a definition for pods. I believe there are other definitions that we're looking to include as well, so that'll be a broadly drafted advertisement. Um, we have housekeeping, which is also very broadly defined. And then commercial indoor recreation will define it to allow for changes to sections of the zoning bylaw pertaining pertaining to indoor commercial recreation. And again, leave it broad, so the board can consider whether there are districts where it's not currently allowed, that you want to add it, or if you want to change the way it's allowed. Right now, it's not allowed in any residential district. It's allowed in all non-residential districts by Z B A special permit. So we'll broadly advertise it so the board can consider any changes to that use that they want. Um, did I skip eight, Elijah?
Uh, does not sound like it, and just to let, uh, so that's eight uh to consider uh in total.
Awesome. Um, I just have two quick things, and I'll be very brief. Um, with the indoor recreation, it sounds like I would want to have on the table splitting the A R O district up, which it sounds like the um advertisement would cover that. Um, and I think Nora, we talked about last time, uh, maybe just making it easier to apply for a permit, maybe only going to the planning board. Um, I looked at the food, you know, it says, you know, accessory um as an accessory use to consumption of food and drink. I think that's probably broad enough, but if there's any areas where we can even broaden it more, this is just more about messaging, uh, to be honest, but um to get it in people's minds as they see this and potentially talk about it at a town meeting. Um, and then I had one new idea, is very quickly. The idea is, and tell me if it's too late this year, but it's to create a new overlay district um to identify certain underutilized commercial parcels, throw them in that new overlay district, and the idea would be potentially to allow for more commercial uses. You know, it's definitely some more messaging. We want to encourage better utilization of some of these properties. Uh, we'd be giving these parcels potentially more commercial use. I haven't dug down into what that would be, but the idea would be to kickstart um some development of some of the commercial properties we already have that, you know, when you drive around town, you you can kind of see um where those spots are. Um, just an idea, yeah.
I'm just wondering, which areas are you thinking? I'm trying to think of your.
I I don't want to be held yet. It's more of a ideal. I I honestly need to drive around town and and pick. Uh, we wouldn't have them all this year, but you could create it, put a few in, and then add them the next year and the year after that, and and really try to, you know, because I do think there are properties. I don't have one off the top of my head, but I I know I've, I've seen them before, and I've thought, oh, like, we should, that should be developed a little.
Better use.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are some parcels that should be put to better use, but some, you, sometimes you just can't attract the business that you need to, so.
So in order to advertise that, I think I'd need a little bit more, just what what you would call it. So we have various commercial underlying zones, and we have the flexible multiple-use overlay districts over the majority of commercial properties, not all. There are a few properties that are outside of that. So would this be more a high-intensity commercial use district? Or um, what, I guess I'm trying to figure out what it is that you would want to allow that we
Yeah.
already allow.
I guess the question for the board is, are there, is the, are there commercial uses that we would want to um add on to parcels that are already commercially used? I'd have to go back and dig into those definitions and and send you, you know, almost email you the the language. And I I don't have that data, like, like the numbers in front of me right now. Um, but I'm curious, do you see commercial buildings on High Street or other parts of town where you could just add some more commercial use, almost again as a message to the property owner, like, we're giving you more uses of this property. We want this to be used. It makes it slightly more valuable to them. Maybe that'll incentivize them to sell it or or rent it or do something else with it, given that.
This needs some.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, if I may, uh, so that that is a great idea for, uh, you know, looking at some more economic development. Um, they, the flexible multiple-use overlay districts do sort of that, and maybe like, we could look at doing something with that. Um, I would just, um, I guess caution uh the the board as there are some new members uh and and, you know, just going into um into next year's town meeting. Maybe this is something that can be like a project that is worked on for like the next um warrant article season. Um, but I would say F M U O D is like one area in which that can uh, you know, be looked at to either expand or uh alter. I I I would just jump in. I I think the idea is great. I think it uh it is, would be challenging uh without a great deal more development at this stage to get it into an advertisement um for Nora, and Nora, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, so if I had a better idea of what use, what use isn't allowed that you're, you would like to see allowed, then I'd have a better, I'd understand how to advertise it. So what I can advertise um amendments to the use chart. Um, that doesn't add a new overlay district, but it allows you to change where uses are allowed in the individual.
Inequal expansion.
Yeah, so if there's, so for instance, um, I don't think you can have a um uh restaurant over ten thousand square feet in a local business district right now. I think you have to be in the highway business district. If I advertised it for changes to the use chart, you might, you might change where that restaurant over ten thousand square feet is allowed, um, or or any uses that are that are currently allowed. But for an overlay district, in order to propose a new overlay district, I need to be able to describe what it will accomplish.
Yeah, it sounds like we would need to go through these, um, you know, you have a lot of fine details that you just give.
Of of what we already, what we already allow, and determine where the holes are, what you think we should do better.
Yep, yep. That makes sense.
Not to be difficult, but if we could wrap up in five, I would make my train.
We uh. We still have a few agenda items, but we can sure try if there's um, if this is, if we've done enough to give staff what they need on this topic for the evening.
I I think we have enough for an advertisement and for very basic first draft of the articles. I'm sure it'll need a lot of work after uh the hearing opens.
Would it be helpful for us to, like, I I did a little research on a couple of things. Would it be helpful for me to forward you offline what what I have and et cetera for other board members?
It would, if you can send it to both Elijah and and copy me.
Perfect. And uh other board members, if you have, you know, I know, Mike, you said you had some things. If anyone else has things to add, just, we'll just forward them along to staff to help expedite that process.
Mm-hmm.
All right, fabulous. Then the next agenda item is minutes from the uh draft meeting minutes from November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Did everyone get a chance to peruse the minutes, and does anyone have any changes they would like to suggest?
They were okay with me.
Yeah, I didn't notice anything that needed. Yeah, same. If uh if nobody has any changes to propose, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the planning board approve the minutes of the meeting of November eighteen, twenty twenty-five as presented.
Second. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Tim.
Me.
Phil.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Maureen.
Hi.
I vote I as well. Motion carries. Thanks as always, Jess. Uh, next um agenda item is agency and committee updates. Updates from agency and committee representatives. Has anyone attended any meetings?
Was not a meeting, no.
Um, we did have long-range financial planning last night. I'll keep it brief. Um, we're kind of, I feel like that committee is being reinvigorated, and we are actually going to be looking at the facility studies for schools and municipal and everything, and and our charge is to kind of come up with a a master plan, not necess, we, we're not making decisions, but to identify what all those needs are with some suggestions on priorities and really kind of provide a tool to the select board and the school community, what, to kind of figure out this is what everything's going to cost, because as Rob pointed out, the big question everyone has is, well, okay, we know there's, what what else is coming? So our our goal is to provide an itemized list of what else is coming so that the residents of the town can make informed decisions about how we want to move forward with meeting those needs. Um, that's just a very high level, but um we're going to start meeting on a regular cadence, and I'm excited about it. Uh, anyone else have anything for agency committee updates? Okay, um, next agenda item is miscellaneous updates and administrative items. Staff, do you have anything for us today?
No.
Okay, well, that that moves things along. Then our final agenda item is upcoming meetings. We have planning board meetings on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, January sixth, twenty twenty-six, and January twentieth, twenty twenty-six. We also have uh Finance and Warrant Commission Article Sponsors Meetings on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-six, and January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-six. It's weird to be saying twenty twenty-six, but we're not that far off. Um, so if nobody else has anything else to discuss, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Phil.
Hi.
Tim.
Morning.
Mike.
Hi.
Maureen.
Hi.
I vote I as well. We are adjourned. I hope you make a drain, Phil.
So do I.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Take care.